Okay, so at this point, I will open the May eighteenth Southampton Planning Board meeting via Zoom. We welcome our visitors also from Channel one ninety-nine cable TV. All our members are present this evening this far except for Paul Forgot. And at the time of this posting on my town government, the head and A and R came in and they failed to post it Monday morning, but I'm going to include it tonight as part of our agenda. And Chuck Connor is with us here from Taylor Real Estate and he's representing Gregory and Jacqueline Champagne, who has a plan for one thirty-seven Middle Row. So I would ask Chuck, Sarah, thank you very much for hosting that for me and Chuck, if you'd like to just explain, if you would, what you're trying to do here. We have the map, it's pretty self-explanatory, but you add whatever you'd like to.
Sure, sure. But as Paul mentioned, in representing the Champagnes presenting a A and R plan in an RV zone.
And Let me correct you before you go any further. I did notice on the the application you had RV, but it is RN. But that does not preclude anything you're doing here because the frontage is is one forty in that district and you have two oh six point nine eight.
Correct.
You've got the acreage was forty thousand and you've got forty three thousand, three oh four. But it's RN, just for your own identification.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I, when I originally looked at the zoning map, the copy I had, it's difficult to place a lot on it. But as you all can see, the the plan was done by Eaton Associates and relied on them to do the research and they said it was in compliance. So, excuse me, as Paul mentioned, it's it beats the zoning requirements for depth and frontage and lot size. And it's a relatively small building envelope because of the power line easement, but it will work for a small house. So, yes, we're asking for your stamp for the A and R plan.
Now, just for our own information, how does that work now when you have an easement going through the property like that? Is it you, you have to have it open for them to use or can they do anything with it, plantings or anything?
Excuse me, the easement will restrict structure. So there's no structure that can go in the easement, Western Mass Electric Easement area. You can pass over it. I'd have to, I think they can control what is planted there. So not sure if they restrict your planting, but it doesn't mean they couldn't come in and clear it out if it got too tall. So.
No, we'll probably see this down the road when the building permit comes in because I don't see any driveway or anything delineated, but that's not part of this plan right now anyway. That's going to be a separate issue down the road.
Correct. Yeah.
Any questions from any of our board members?
Looks, looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so right now they're just splitting their current lot into two so they can do what they will with that second portion.
They did receive the hundred dollar check from Chuck for that new lot. So that's been received. Does anybody else have any other questions regarding this?
Not I.
If there is none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the A and R is presented.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Sarah and seconded by Cindy. I'll take a roll call for your, your vote, Sarah. Cindy?
Aye.
Ian?
Aye.
Ian, Paul. Aye, four oh oh. Okay, Chuck, I will sign these and what I can do is probably, are you in the office? Is the office open tomorrow?
Yes, we're, we're open every day.
Okay.
Early in the morning.
Probably do is I'll get them signed and I'll drop them off at your office so you don't have to go back to Town Hall.
Excellent. Okay, whatever works.
Go from there. Right.
All right. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Good night.
Good day.
Next on the agenda, I have a discussion and a continuation of the discussion we had regarding the move-in storage on Coleman Road and Route ten and the response from Berkshire Design on some questions that were posed at our last meeting. And Jeffrey Squire is here representing the client in Berkshire Design Group. And Jeff, would you just kind of outline the questions that Paul forgot had sent to you? And also, if you could give us some information or if you know about the bond that. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, yeah, good evening, everyone. My name's Jeff Squire. I'm with a Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of Investment Real Estate LLC, who is the owner of the move-in storage property. Yeah, and as, as you all know, is a very complicated project just due to the, the municipal boundary and everything going on. So just to bring everybody up to date, we have gotten approvals from planning boards and conservation commissions in both towns with the exception of this, you know, discussion or, or, you know, outlier. So however this plays out is, is the last permit that we've got to get before pursuing building permits. So in response to Paul, just directly responding to those questions that were asked and our responses, I can just share that document if you want, just going through those with you, just so I make sure I cover them all.
Yeah, please do.
So I believe this was the document that we provided.
Yes.
So this outlined the, the area of disturbance in both towns in East Hampton and Southampton. Area disturbance Southampton is twenty-eight thousand square feet. East Hampton is, is ninety-eight thousand square feet. So it's about a quarter, I'm sorry, half an acre in Southampton. Area of new, or area, new area of new impervious area in Southampton is a little over three thousand square feet. East Hampton is a much larger component, obviously with a larger expansion in that town. And then the total impervious surface and total impervious surface in square feet is this, this number seems to be wrong here. Three thousand total area. Yeah, I'm sorry. This number doesn't quite make sense to me in reading this because it's the new impervious area. But this, this is representative of the new impervious area that's being, being proposed in Southampton. Stormwater management system proposed to be within Southampton and how they relate to the entire project. So, so there's a stormwater basin that is proposed in both towns. There is one in East Hampton that takes the larger portion of the project in that part of the town. There is a, a smaller basin in East Hampton that takes, you know, this, this portion of development, although a large portion of this goes to an existing outfall. So it just picks up that three thousand square feet of, of new impervious area and some additional runoff associated with the buildings into a detention basin here. The remainder is all in, all in East Hampton. And so it's, it's a complicated system in that it's split between two municipalities. But, you know, as, as is common in many, you know, larger projects and that detention system and stormwater system is split into, you know, multiple watersheds. So it is compliance with a, in compliance with the mass stormwater standards. It has been reviewed under the East Hampton stormwater bylaws. It's been reviewed by DEP. And it's so, yeah, so in, in the response to this question directly, you know, this, this stormwater basin that's in East Hampton is part of, you know, part of a, a larger system that is encompassing of, of both municipalities.
Now, would you go back to the map? Jeff, please.
Sure.
Okay, Sarah, in Paul's absence, but I'm looking at his email, Jeff, that he sent you about a roof drain that connects to the new drainage system. And Paul said that the for the roof drains accounted for in the stormwater report, it looks like the figures don't match the latest site plans, particularly the roof drains. The proposed buildings look different in each of the development plans, which complicates the intent from the roof drains. And then you respond to that.
Right. So, yeah, so a little bit of history with the project. So this, this had been started back three years ago, pre-COVID. They had originally been looking at seven buildings total, or let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven buildings in total. So if you can imagine these middle portions left out, which is, I think, what is representative in the stormwater report, was what was originally proposed. So it was, it was eleven storage buildings. And part of the reason that the project got delayed, not only because of COVID, but because of issues or concerns regarding permit fees. And so, and it's not your issue, but just for your information, you know, so DEP and the, and the notice of intent requires a thousand dollars, a thousand, almost eleven hundred dollars per building for new projects. So obviously, the more buildings they have, the larger that fee. It was, it was the better part of a thirteen thousand dollar fee for the notice of intent, which, you know, was, was astronomical in terms of, you know, the scale of the project. So that compounded with the idea that they had, had, had come up with an additional product to offer. So the idea is that these are covered aisles now and protected from the weather. It's still the same number of storage units, but it's one single roof span. If you can imagine a ridge line running roughly where my cursor is, you know, roof shedding this way, shoot, roof shedding this way, that these are aisles that people have access to and be able to get in, you know, to their, to their units.
Recording in progress.
Outside of the weather. It was another product for them to offer. So it offered an opportunity for them to not only reduce their, their overall permit fees, but offer another product to, to, to customers. It does not change the overall impervious area. So this area was, was paved or roof area in those stormwater calculations. And the original stormwater report, we didn't revise the entire report based on just that one graphic, you know, detail, I guess. Really, it's the, the, the amount of impervious area has been accounted for. And in actuality, the, the additional roof area is an improvement over paved area in that it's generally considered as, as clean runoff. It doesn't have the same, you know, sediment build up and, and, and opportunities to pick up, you know, stuff in the, in the parking lot that, that parking lot erosion or runoff has. So that was, that was the discrepancy. All, all of the numbers have been accounted for in the drainage report.
Now, on Paul's question three, there are three outlets pipes that discharge between E one A, E one B. Are these three outlets accounted for in the report? Do we know where the two pipes that are not connected to the existing and proposed drainage pipes come from?
So as I alluded to, there are a number, so this is an existing condition survey plan. There's a number of outlets. There's one, two, three. There's another one. There's another down here. And there's an additional one out here. All of these are existing drainage outlets that we have no history of, of, or knowledge of other than chasing back what we were able to, you know, you know, observe on the surface or without, you know, extensive excavation on the site, obviously. This, there were no as-built plans. There were no record plans. We did open these structures to observe the various pipe inlets and outlets as part of that survey, but we, we really have no idea, for example, where this drain line, you know, here comes from. We don't know where this outlet originates. All of the existing stormwater onsite runs somewhere now, whether it's through subsurface drains or through, you know, over surface to, to controlled outlets. I'm not, you know, I am honestly, we came into this well beyond the, the original permit, permit applications for this project. So I can't speak to how this all came about. The only one we are changing is the one that we were able to chase back to this catch basin, which is this one outlet. Everything else, all of these existing buildings, all of that runoff or the majority of that runoff, including the roof drains, are not going to change from the existing condition.
Okay.
Can, could you just speak to the roof drainage and how that works? I think that's where some of our questions came from. I understand the impervious area doesn't change when you, you know, connect the different buildings, but it does change a little bit how you direct that if there's roof leaders or if it's just all coming down a downspout to the, just to, to the pavement. Can you just walk us through that?
Yeah, and I, I, quite honestly, you know, we're just working through final construction documents with a, with the contractors now. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of those final details are really being worked out. What I can say is that, you know, we know there are, you know, opportunities to connect to the existing drainage system, you know, particularly on this, on this north edge. So we imagine those will be all tied to that drainage system to the extent that we can to bring a pipe around subsurface for all these new outlets, I think, you know, is, is probably more than, you know, is, is really feasible on the project. So I imagine most of these, which again, the location shown on this plan are, were our best guess at the time. We're working through, you know, how those will all finally play out. But again, if you can imagine a ridge line running this, you know, where my cursor is, these would pick up the roof on, on this side of the building, presumably discharged degrade. Those are all directed through the stormwater system. So there's, there's no proposed connections to this piped outlet or any of those changes other than what we're showing here. So if, if those were to be tied directly to any of the existing system, we would certainly have to update and revise the stormwater report.
Okay, so for the, I, I don't actually know how this is oriented, but what I'm thinking of as nor, I guess it's, yeah, the north side. So the north side of these two buildings, you know, like you said, if the bridge line is in the middle, are going to drain and either be connected to this existing drain line via some sort of pipe or just run down via a downspout from a gutter and run across the pavement to these catch basins. So I think, and this is a, a new line. This is, this D dash line is a new pipe that's going in?
It is the reroute of an existing pipe. So there's, there's an existing, if you can see under here, there's a gray scaled, you know, line that runs to that existing outlet now. And so because of where these buildings are located, we simply need to relocate that drain line. We're going to re, we're going to connect the building. This, this portion of the building has been accounted for in the drainage calculations. Everything else, you know, on this side of the building will be directed through this stormwater system, which has been accounted for.
Okay, so that, that makes sense. So for the southern side, it'll run down and then obviously the pavement is graded to try and bring it to that grass water quality swale. So this isn't necessarily an issue, but what jumps out at me from the Southampton side is just that it is a significant amount of impervious area in East Hampton, which is then coming, you know, the water, the runoff coming into a detention basin in Southampton. And again, I'm not necessarily saying that's an issue, but in terms of the report on the front, you know, this little paved corner in Southampton, we're actually seeing a bigger impact in terms of runoff, because there's actually, it's creating a situation where runoff is coming across the town line. Is that correct? It's not necessarily an issue. Like I said, I just want to make sure that that's, we're all aware of it.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. Yeah. I mean, we're, we're accounting for that runoff and the overall stormwater report. And that's part of what makes this complicated is that the stormwater report is, you know, is for this entire project as you would design any other project. It just happens that this is.
There happens to be a town line.
Very complicated, yes.
So that kind of leads me to my question of, in the stormwater management plan, is Southampton covered as well for the, for the operation maintenance of that detention basin?
Yeah. So, so there is an overall operation and maintenance plan that has been at least part of the stormwater permit issued in, in East Hampton, which includes maintenance for both of these basins. And my, my understanding, as, as, as one of the other questions came up is, is in, in regards to the bond is at least insofar as I understand it right now in my discussions with Cassie, who's the agent for the Conservation Commission in East Hampton, is that our, our intention was that all of that, all of that bond would be with East Hampton and they would work out whatever they need to with, you know, with, with Southampton as a municipality to cover any, anything that may happen. But to split that up or require it in both towns gets really complicated.
Getting back to the, the original letter, and by the way, Richard Harris is here, Jeff, our board consultant that requested some of those questions, not, not the ones that Paul forgot posed, but the ones that you were originally referring to. And Richard, if, if you have any questions or comments, please chime in.
Fine. Hi, Jeff.
I, I was going to say the same thing, Richard. I, I worked with, with Richard as, as planning board chair in South Hadley while he was, while he was director of the planning, planning department in South Hadley. So it's good to see you again, Richard.
Same here.
So continue back on your letter of Richard's original questions. There you go.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, the project obviously is, as I alluded to, that it's, it was and has been reviewed under, you know, the, the East Hampton stormwater bylaw, the DEP guidelines, mass stormwater standards and any of, you know, any of the other bylaws or stormwater standards that would apply in East Hampton. Business, bylaws. So, yeah, so I think the, the, the trigger for the stormwater permit in Southampton is, is one acre of disturbance. Is that, is that correct?
Forty thousand.
Okay, so, yeah, so the, you know, obviously the component in Southampton is, is pretty limited. And, you know, we, we, you know, understand that there's some ambiguity in terms of how that's, that, that, that standard or that, that trigger would apply in this case. Nevertheless, you know, we, we agree that it doesn't preclude the, the project from being reviewed by, by Southampton and, and under the the, the requirements of the stormwater permit, you know, requirements in Southampton. So, you know, we, we've done so in accordance with, you know, whatever, whatever regulations or requests we've had from, from the town. And then obviously confirm, confirming that the project was designed and built in, in accordance with DEP standards. You know, the, obviously the, the stormwater, the stormwater design has been designed in accordance with those standards and we can't confirm the, the, the as-built condition. But we can certainly say that, you know, at least it's been designed in compliance with all of those standards and has been reviewed by, you know, the, all of those entities that I mentioned previously, including, you know, all those in East Hampton and in Southampton.
Richard comments?
I think he's, he's addressed my questions. I think it's, I think one question I've asked that's, his presentation has highlighted is it may be in relevant for the board to look at in mending the, the bylaw down the road is what percentage, what square footage of impervious area or disturbed area is going to be flowing into Southampton? I think that may be a consideration the board may want to make in the future in making amendment to the bylaw, because it, it highlights that you could have a couple thousand square feet of disturbed area in Southampton. But you may, you could very well have forty thousand square feet of disturbed area flowing into Southampton on a project. And I think you may want to look at a mini of the bylaw to try to capture that into a threshold for triggering your bylaw.
Got you.
But what I, what I heard before was that although there's some ambiguity in that wording, they had gone ahead when they did cover the East Hampton stormwater management plan, included the detention basin number one that's in Southampton. Right? So they.
So I've addressed all the questions and.
Yeah, they have, they, they apply the same East Ham, the East Hampton stormwater bylaw to the Southampton area. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's good. The only other question I have is where's the entrance and exit way for the construction?
So that'll all be through this existing, you know, opening off of Coleman Road. I'm not sure. I know they are talking about phased construction initially because of the cost of construction these days that they want to install, you know, at least this basin and this basin, start with this building and this building and then, you know, proceed from there. So I imagine it'll all come in from, from this entrance here somehow, whether they'll build this initial entry or not. That's currently being worked out.
Yeah. Is there any need for like a track pad or anything for the entrance area? I'm not sure what it looks like now, so.
Sure, sure. No, that's a fair question. So, yeah, I mean, the, all of this is, is a grassed area now. So if they utilize this as a new entrance, it'll certainly require a, a tracking pad. This, this is all paved into the current site now. I would, you know, be hard pressed to think that this would be an appropriate entrance for construction vehicles in and around the, around the storage units. So, you know, we're working with a contractor now to develop the SWIP and a final, you know, construction staging plan is, is, is required by, you know, a bunch of the permits already obtained. So if, if it does include this, this is where the tracking pad will be.
For sure. Yeah, we just want to make sure they reduce any sediment that would end up on Coleman Road during construction.
Absolutely. So. And, and there's also an operating commercial business on the corner that this, you know, that this is going to have to be, you know, very, you know, so.
Yeah.
Go, go, go ahead, Rich.
Yeah. You mentioned the apartment starting this, the new areas that feed in Southampton. Is this the only access way into the site that you mentioned?
It is. Yeah, there is, there is no access out onto Route ten.
So when they, how they can access the site for these other four buildings in East Hampton?
So what's, what's proposed, there's currently a gate at this location right here. So, you know, access right now is, is through this parking lot. They've got an access easement, you know, this, this all used to be part of a larger parcel, then this was carved out at some point. So they've got an access easement through this gate now, you know, they would propose a second gate here. They're, they're looking at doing an onsite office in this end of the building. That's the reason for, you know, these parking spaces here, but there would be a new access gate here. You know, this, those would both operate with a, you know, with some sort of code or ID that, you know, would, would operate those for, for customers using those storage units.
Okay, I was thinking they might want to do the ones in Southampton first and get, make that easier. make that easier.
Yeah. So yeah, it's, it's not entirely my decision, but we are working with the contractors and the owners to figure out the best way to stage this.
Questions? Sarah, Cindy?
I don't have any, any questions. Um, I, I just agree with Richard largely that we should maybe think about some language to cover that in the future, because I think this project has been evaluated and I don't really see it as an issue. But we wouldn't want something to, to be able to avoid permitting in the future that, you know, have kind of a similar implication.
My, my question is, maybe I just don't see it. Where would be the permanent access road for the, um, individuals who might be renting these storage containers where is that in East Hampton or on Route 10?
It's, it's still going to remain off of Coleman Road. So all, all of these units, you know, folks would either, if, if they were trying to access these new storage units in East Hampton or any of these, they would come through either, you know, the existing entrance gate or the new one proposed, which would be in Southampton. But either way, they would be able to, you know, get in, get into the site.
Would, would you mind circling your little hand there again on the existing gate? Where is it right now? It's.
Cindy, are you familiar with Freedom Credit Union Drive Up?
Yeah, I am. And then the Verizon store is right there, right?
As you're, as you're in the drive up, if you look straight ahead, that's the gate is right where his cursor is.
In front of you.
Okay.
And that will remain there, but they're also going to be putting another one down by this, where the new building is being constructed there.
Okay.
But it's the same driveway that. Yeah, it's the same driveway they're using now.
Okay. It just wasn't clear to me on this scheme.
Sure.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. That being said, if everybody's satisfied, we'll move along. Do I have a motion to accept the information that we required from Jeff Squire and Move-In Storage regarding their stormwater for us?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Dan and seconded by Sarah. Any other further discussion? On the roll call, um, Sarah?
Hi.
Anne?
I.
Cindy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Four, oh, oh. All right, Jeffrey, thank you and sorry for the long drawn out affair here. But we finally got to the bottom of it.
That's great. And, uh, yeah, no, it, it didn't, uh, impact us at all. So that's appreciate your, your, um, your comments.
And I'll send you a our decision on this versus tonight for your records.
And to just, this isn't nearly as drawn out as Jeff is used to in South Haven.
Only on a few projects, Richard. It was good seeing you and thank you again, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
All right, see ya.
That notes on the agenda that I have, uh, there was no building permits. I have, uh, nothing else other than if Richard wants to maybe give us, uh, oh, by the way, you saw my communication regarding the Ecode Zoom meeting, uh, that the folks from Ecode want to do with us uh, at our next meeting at six o'clock.
Oh.
They usually, they usually, uh, stop at five. Their last meeting is at five, five to six, but they agreed to go from six to whatever with us. I, I can't envision that it would take more than a half hour, but anyway, that's next meeting and Richard's invited on that. And if you have any questions or you've been thinking about Ecode, we can then present it to the people from that company. And Richard, uh, how's things on your end now?
I've been looking. I'm looking at Ecode draft some and, um, they haven't really changed much. They different format, structure. But I do think that we could, and this one, I think we need to talk to them about on June 2nd. We could incorporate some of the revisions that the board has been looking at into their format and suggest that the zoning bylaw be done as a repeal and replace, which is one of the options that they gave in their proposal to the select board.
Now, what does that mean? Repeal and replace?
It means what you would do is incorporate revisions into it. And then the motion at town meeting would be to repeal the zoning bylaw in its entirety and place it with a new one.
Oh, how would that affect, uh, the revisions for public hearing though? Or does it not go to public?
Any change to the zoning bylaw has to go to public hearing.
Okay.
Even the format has to go public hearing.
Right.
Uh, so you just present all that at public hearing as this re- reformat is only by law with following substantive changes. And I would just, for instance, uh, a, um, incorporation site plan review chapter as one of those items incorporation of additional definitions that Larry had drafted up and transferring definitions from other sections of the bylaw into the definition section. Those type things could all be part of the repeal and replace by law as opposed to, uh, waiting to do those after they do the codification.
Now, there are chapters and sections, uh, was that that was all, uh, pre-formatted? So you're, you're okay with that?
Yeah, we would have to check what the revisions we've done and put back into, put into their format, but yeah. Uh, I, I've worked with Ecode in South Hadley and it's a really good program. It's a really, it's structure I like to use. I think, I think it's an easy numbering system follow is easy reference system. And I assume, I assume the town is going to have them maintain it for them. Uh, which in South Hadley means once or twice a year, the town clerk would submit all, uh, bylaw changes to general code that have been approved by the town meeting and general code then incorporated into it.
Did you notice in, uh, general bylaws, the ones that they recorded and they've, they've got done, that there's two or three that apply to us as well?
I didn't look at the general bylaws.
I'm trying to think offhand. I think solar was one of them. Livestock. I don't have the in front of me, but I noticed there was, there was at least three topics that we had covered. And I didn't want to duplicate that, but I wondered how, how you would incorporate.
Let me go back, let him look at, I hadn't looked at the, uh, general code, general bylaw portion of it. Let him go back and look at those topics and see exactly what is addressed in the general bylaw.
Stormwater, I think was one.
No, and stormwater is a general bylaw. Those are the general bylaws.
Stormwater, solar, and there's something else. I can't, I can't put my finger out.
Uh, and, and stormwater needs to be a general bylaw.
Yeah.
It should not be, uh, zoning. But what the, I, I, I had to go back and look at the general bylaw changes, see what they put in there for zoning and livestock. Cause some.
Yeah, there were some things in there about chickens.
Sometimes you will have something in general bylaw that's also addressing zoning and general bylaw may be a licensing issue. It shouldn't be.
I guess it shouldn't be regulatory.
It shouldn't, it, it may be regulatory in terms of, uh, building permits and stuff, but it shouldn't be regulatory in terms of the land use.
Yeah, right.
Which was only addresses. Uh, so let them take a look and see what they put in there under, um, for, for solar and livestock. I said, I focus on zoning by law. I wasn't focused on general by law, but I'll take a look at that.
Well, we're getting awfully close to the end of the fiscal year here and, um, do you envision us doing any work before the end of June or continuing anything right now?
I think, uh, not, not anything major now.
Okay. So I would like you then to, um, before the end of June, if you could submit, you gave us an estimate before, uh, of the work that we were doing.
Right.
Right. So you can give us a, an updated, uh, budget, so to speak. Less what we've already covered and what we paid you for, so we can probably have an idea what we're looking at, because the, the town financiers are trying to get us some money somewhere. There's evidently none in the regular budget that they're allowing, that they're trying to get some art funds for us in some respects. And I, I sent forward your original estimate. And then I had to deduct the, what was it, like $6,000 from the PVPC work on the, um, affordable housing and inclusionary zoning. To try to figure out, I came up with like $15,000 now. I want to see how close that is with what you might come up with for the work we have left.
Okay. I'll get that to, I'll get to that too by mid-June.
Sure. Thank you.
Probably wait till after the June 2nd meetings and see how that discussion with.
Right, yeah, right. Very good. Um, any other, anybody have any other questions for Richard before we let him go? Well, thank you and, uh, continue to heal and we'll see you on the, is it the second, the first?
I think you said the second.
The second is a Thursday?
First would be a Wednesday.
Yeah, first. It's the first, yeah.
Okay. So see you June 1st then.
Thank you, Richard.
Good night.
Uh, any committee reports? Update? Oh, while we're on it, um, Sarah, Cindy and I, um, attended a joint meeting with Housing Partnership Housing Authority regarding the housing production plan. And maybe Sarah or Cindy want to chime in, um, because Sarah has been a part of it. Dan, I think you had been too.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed it.
And I want to, um, correct my, not correct myself, but I want to explain myself, um, I think toward the end. When I was asked if I wanted the plan presented somehow, I can't remember the wording of it. It's not that I didn't. I was trying to avoid a lot of joint meetings and discussion on it until all the all this information was called and we could get together one time and go through it. And I, I wrote to, uh, Ken Comey and I really like housing to really focus on their part of this. You know, this, this has got a lot to do with them. We have a lot on our, um, work table as it is. And as I see it, the regulatory stuff, we have to deal with. We don't have a choice. But I don't want to get involved in joint meetings about the trust partnership or the trust fund or anything that's not.
There's an intention for that, Paul. I, I think that, you know, we're supposed to approve the plan, but then I think Sierra in particular is kind of taking the lead on some of that stuff. You know, they're trying hard to get some of that established. So I think they were maybe to some degree looking for input, but also I think it's just that we as a planning board have to approve this housing production plan. Um, I mean, we can clarify that, but I don't think like in terms of actually establishing the housing trust and like working, that, that's like a decent amount of work. I think that they're definitely taking the lead on it and I don't think we need to have a lot of involvement.
No, no, but and I, and I hope when they, and, and I'd like them to come back to us with a joint meeting with all their ideas that they have regarding all kinds of different housing uh, in, in different zoning districts. And then we can hash that out at the end, find out what we can do and what's reasonable and what's not and put a finishing touches on it before it goes to public hearing. But it's not that I didn't want to share it with Dan or Paul. But in fact, I asked Ken to email us that presentation he made because I, I wanted a copy of it. Uh, so you folks probably are going to be getting it pretty, pretty quick here. Anything else on this, Sarah?
No, I, I think that sounds good. I mean, really what we're approving is, you know, a plan and the plan has to have certain goals in terms of, you know, we're supposed to be, the whole reason we have this housing production plan is because there's a state requirement to have 10% affordable housing. And of course we don't, so we need to show as a town that we're moving towards that. So it's, it's kind of twofold. We need to have that plan in place, which is setting out our goals. And of course, some of them are more the responsibility of the housing authority and some are more the responsibility, the planning board, the regulatory items to work towards. But it might be worth kind of getting the plan approved with all these short-term, long-term, you know, two, five, 10-year goals on it. And then meeting with housing, if needed, on some of the more specific short-term stuff, once the housing production plan is approved. Does that make sense? Rather than trying to look at the whole thing. I mean, we have spent a decent amount of time on, on the overarching plan. So I think that the housing authority, I think they're eager to put some of this stuff like make it real, which is, is great and we should be. That's the whole point of the plan. But I think part of the discussion is, um, I personally think we get the plan approved and then focus on the, the goals within it, um, somewhat separately.
Yeah, and I would hope, and there's probably going to be enough time, but I would, I, I was curious the other night when, um, Cindy said there was money to buy, you know, land on College Highway or somewhere. It's, how can you, how can you buy land if you don't have this trust set up or, or a vehicle to, to work with? How can you do it? Now they said, yeah, well, the town's going to own it, but I would think you'd have to have that that vehicle set up before you start purchasing and buying and selling.
Well, the understanding is, and, uh, Sarah actually was, I think, able to attend the CPC meeting. Because I was not available in April. The idea is that they don't have the trust and things are coming on the market and they're, they hate to miss the opportunity. And this lot is come available on Route 10. It went to CPC, as far as I understand, correct me, Sarah, if I'm wrong, uh, it was approved. Uh, on the other hand, I happen to feel it was a pretty fragmented plan for what they're going to do at this point. So those are some of the questions I was raising. Because it's just because before town meeting, people are going to ask questions like you are, Paul. You know, what are you going to do with this land? What are you going to build on it? So, um, I do understand how things come on the market, the price of real estate, whether it be just lots or houses are soaring right now. And this lot could be appropriate for affordable housing. I think they walked the property and they've talked to some entities that might be able to build some affordable housing. So I, I, I do support that if it's, if it's achievable to get this now and it passes at town meeting, that it could be something that would help increase the, um, the amount of affordable housing, which we don't have at this point. Um, that's my take on it.
I'm in agreement with you. I just, I just didn't know what, which entity was going to be responsible for all the paperwork involved in the, the, the work.
They don't have, they don't have a trust. So there's all, the only way to do it right now is to utilize CPC funds.
Right.
And then in terms of building something, I, I think they're still looking at options in terms of, you know, working with Habitat for Humanity or there's a few different organizations, you know, which could help facilitate, um, potentially construction of, I don't think there's a plan yet, but whether it was duplex or, you know, condo or whatever.
Right, right, great. Okay. Any other committee reports, updates? Cindy, Dan?
Not really. Um, you got my question and you got my answer. And I'll just tell the rest of the board. I asked Paul earlier today if he had any knowledge of, um, what would happen if, if, I know the Public Safety Building Committee is looking at lots that are. looking at lots that are owned by the town as well as potentially lots privately owned. And what would be the implication for building a municipal building on, on a, on a lot that might be zoned residential? Uh, Sarah knows we're, we're asking these questions. Um, I did go to Ed Gibson after I saw Paul and Ed said municipalities can just build in whatever zone. They do not have to get a variance. They don't have to do a public hearing if it's a municipal building. That was.
So they're exempt, they're exempt.
That was what Ed said, yes.
I know.
And he will report that at the next meeting of the Public Safety Building.
I think, I think some of the residential areas might have a say in where, where they would want sirens.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're not looking at, you know, we have, um, as the Public Safety Building Committee, we're working on narrowing down a list of lots right now. And, you know, for the most part, we're trying to stay right near Route 10, you know, it's there, there's a reason, you know, the logistical aspect too. You don't want to be leaving through a neighborhood street.
No, no. No, and you're right. You want your services to kind of be in a central area where they can hit everywhere in a short, short period of time. Very good. Um, I'm glad, Richard, I had to dismiss him because I, we were going to, I'm going to propose an invoice for him to be paid. Uh, it was for the month of, uh, April, $375. The last meeting we, we approved his for, uh, March, which was only like 300. So these aren't bad. Uh, they're under a thousands, which are good. So do I have a motion to pay Richard $375 for the month of April?
I moved to pay that invoice.
Oh, second that.
Motion made by Cindy and approved, uh, seconded by Sarah. All in favor, Cindy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Paul, aye. Other than that, I have nothing. Um, I just reminder that the E code will be Zoom. I'll send that information six o'clock, not seven. And we'll, we'll see what that's all about. Like a little show. And I don't, I don't know what I'll have for business. There isn't much flowing through, but whatever we'll have, we'll pick up from there.
Sounds good.
In the meantime, have a nice Memorial Day weekend with you and your families and.
You too.
You too. Thanks.